Nine o'clock. The May first, two thousand and twenty five special meeting is now called to order. Okay, we have both called. Becky Curtis, here. Gina Reed Hitler. John Breckenridge.
Here.
John Feiger.
Here.
Mark Carr. In the matter of Matt Art's removal from the Cameron Park Board, I would entertain a motion to open the hearing pursuant to section ninety point five three oh of the revised statutes of the state of Missouri and section two dash one three two of the city Cameron City Code.
No move.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. This hearing concerns the removal of Matt Art from the Cameron Park Board for misconduct and neglect of duty. None of them. Oh. All in favor? All in favor?
Bye.
All right. This is not a traditional public hearing in that members of the public will not be able to participate in the hearing unless called to testify. Any testimony given at this hearing shall be given under oath and subject to cross examination. Pursuant to section ninety dot five three zero and section two dash one three two. If the city council consists consents to the removal of Matt Art from the Cameron Park Board, said decision will be handed down within a week of this hearing. Any party and his attorney shall make his entry of appearance at this time.
Uh, Patrick Corcoran on behalf of the City of Cameron.
Mister Art, if you will be representing represented by counsel, they may enter their appearance at this time.
I will not be represented by counsel.
Please let the record reflect Mister Art is representing himself in this manner. Please note that this meeting will be counseled by counsel will be recorded and as it's as stated previously, testimony given today shall be under oath and subject to cross examination. Anybody testifying at this hearing will need to be sworn in first by the city clerk. Before giving testimony, please state and spell your name for the record and give your address.
Is anybody going to testify?
I intend to ask some questions of Steve Lance and Shelley and potentially Mayor Curtis. I recognize at least Shelley and Mayor Curtis are participants in the the hearing and therefore I would waive asking them to leave.
So Lance is, I gotta get, what you guys have to get sworn in and then.
Do I need to do a panel? Individually or together?
We'll do it together.
You swear it, raise your head. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
I do, I do. See you guys later.
Okay.
There we go, clock that. It looks like you were in the park for a good time.
Yeah, thirty minutes and then I've got it highlighted right there on one.
Okay.
Maybe you can sit there and you can look at the scheduling and do the time.
The city's attorney will present the city's case and evidence and after he is through, Mister Art may be heard and present evidence. Each party will be given thirty minutes to present evidence, fifteen minutes to cross examine any witness offered by the other party. And ten minutes to summarize their evidence and legal argument at the end of the hearing. Evidence that is relevant shall address why the actions of Mister Art are or are not misconduct and neglect of duty. Once all the parties have had a chance to make their case and present evidence, the hearing will be adjourned.
Uh, mayor and members of the city council, as stated this hearing is regarding the removal of Matt Art from Cameron Park Board under section ninety five third view of the revised statutes of the statements area in section two dash one three two. Both those sections require that removal be done based on misconduct or neglect of duty. Neither of the terms misconduct or neglect of duty are uh defined in that section. Um, so for the purpose of misconduct, uh, the Cambridge Dictionary out finds it as unacceptable or bad behavior by someone in a position of authority or responsibility. Or neglect of duty under the higher standard standard of willful neglect of duty. Uh, the Missouri courts have determined that it means failing to perform some work duty or act potential refusal refusal indifference or unwillingness performs one's duty. Or alternatively arises when a public officer intentionally fails to act contrary to a known duty. Given that section ninety five thirty and section two dash one through two omit the use of willful. That would seem to mean that the standard before the city council today, whether or not Mister Art failed to perform a known duty. Either intentionally or not. Regardless of the standard, the evidence that will be presented today establishes that there was misconduct and elective duty on the behalf of Mister Art. Um, prior to beginning any further discussion, I would offer into evidence exhibits one, two, and three of the city exhibit one, the affidavit of Shelley Blades checks to provide some basic groundwork for what's going on today back up right there. Included and then exhibit two is the affidavit of Steve Rassismann. Then affidavit three or exhibit three is the affidavit of Lance Rain. Uh, also included within the binder is a legal briefing on applying the facts as stated in the exhibits and in the affidavits to be offered by Mister Art and applying them to the standards that was just discussed. As uh noted in the letter from the mayor to Mister Art, there are three reasons for removal. Two of them are misconduct and one is neglect of duty. The first matter of misconduct is the apparent attempt to first obtain a no bid contract from the park board to perform services regarding the hazardous tree assessment. Then after finding out that receiving a no bid contract would violate section one oh five point four by four point one one revised statutes of the conflict of interest, Mister Hart continued to act in a manner that was unacceptable by someone in a position of authority by participating in the continued discussions by the park board regarding the hazardous preassessment. And then finally, six months after being told that he could not receive a no bid contract, Mister Art provided an email to Lance Rain where again he attempted to lobby city staff to receive a contract. Now on page two of the legal memo in front of you, there is a brief synopsis of the facts as shown the uh affidavit of Shelley Blades. The first one is that on February eighth, twenty twenty four, aren't initially and unprompted brought up the need for hazard free assessment. On February thirteenth, twenty twenty four, our emails bid specifications and quote to Eric Herbert and Park Superintendent and Steve Rasmussen. On April eleventh, twenty twenty four, Mister Rasmus tells Mister Art that he cannot perform the services without the project going out for bid. The Rasmus and affidavit at paragraph six. April eleventh, twenty twenty four, Mister makes the motion and votes in the affirmative for the park board to get a hazardous tree assessment plan in place. Blades affidavit exhibit E, page three. June twenty seventh, twenty twenty four, aren't again brings up the hazardous tree assessment states he can bid on the project. States that the other local competitor is not qualified to perform the service and other members of the park board at this point begin to question whether or not why they cannot just receive the contract. September twenty sixth, twenty twenty four, this is a little bit more in depth. If if you are looking at the booklet, I did not mark each exhibit of Miss Blade, but is should be midway through the beginning portion, if you had a budget, you've gone too far. And at the top of page two of exhibit G of Blades affidavit. Or yet again, Art had brought up the hazardous tree assessment stated yet again that the other local competitor is not qualified. States that the assessment should be done immediately. In this note is also a statement that at a previous meeting, the board requested that the project be bid so that Matt would be able to potentially receive contract for the project in accordance with the others rules. Now, this is key because that dates back to what seems to be the April eleventh, twenty twenty four meeting. Following the meeting on uh September twenty sixth, September twenty seventh, uh, our emails Lance Rain's forwarded him his previous email to Eric Herbert and Steve Rassismann. He his commitment to the quote, his belief that other companies were charged ten thousand, fifteen thousand dollars to perform the same services. And that the city did not act soon regarding the quote is may need to be adjusted higher. Now taking taken similarly, each one of these is unacceptable behavior by the member of a board or a public body. Taken cumulatively, though, under Missouri law, they go much further than just being misconduct. At the bottom of page one of the legal memo, you'll see two citations to case law, whenever it is possible to have competitive bidding, a fair opportunity must be given for such competition. And any scheme or device designed for most favoritism will render the whole receiving void. And state actually Hanson, the court recognized that competitive bidding procedures for public contracts should ensure uh, all who may wish to bid shall have a fair opportunity to compete in a field where no favoritism is shown or may be shown to other contestants. Currently before us, there was a bidder, known bidder, bitter knew that they were going to bid on the project, participating in every discussion, driving discussion. And then the park board even specifically deciding to send it out to bid, not to receive the lowest investment, but so that Matt could potentially get the contract. At that point, due to this, if a bid ever does go out for these services, there is a significant likelihood that any bidder that does not receive it would have a very sound legal argument to challenge the city's approval of especially Mister Hart. The second reason for misconduct is participating in an unnoticed meeting of the park board. Um, on March seventh, as stated in the Blades affidavit and the affidavits of drag out right. The affidavits of Al Briggs, Julie Osmus, Chris Wilkinson and Josh Smith. A forum of the Cameron Park Board was in attendance at a preliminary injunction hearing regarding the case for City of Cameron. Now, as the city council and the public is well aware, the entire purpose of that case was to attempt to determine the duties and functions of the park board as it related to various sales taxes and funds here in the city. The city's common practice, as noted in exhibits I, J, K, and L, is that whenever members of a public governmental body under the city of Cameron may end up meeting in a forum at an event where public business will be discussed, it's supposed a notice of form. Again, those there are just four samples, there are more, uh, and the results of one posted for today's hearing for the park board as well. In the affidavits, you'll see discussion about what was discussed at the first or at the hearing. First, the hearing itself involved significant amounts of public business. Second, you'll see that a forum of the park board ended up meeting post hearing in the vestibule at the courthouse. Now, the affidavit of Briggs, Austin, and Wilkinson all state that at that point they were no longer discussing anything related to parks. The affidavit of Josh Smith is not as clear, but seems to reference that at this time, there may have been discussion regarding the case that was going on, but that that discussion would not be considered part business because the park board at that point had been dismissed from the litigation. However, as the city council and the public knows, the entire purpose of that case was the park board's functions. So it was still regardless of who was the party, as the judge in that case determined that Mister Hart could adequately represent the interests of the park board, park board business. Now, even violation of just the city's standard practice or the appearance that the city is violating the sunshine law is unacceptable behavior by a person in a supervisory or role of authority. The final reason for removal is neglect of duty, specifically the failure to submit the annual report report required by section ninety five sixty and section two act one three five in the Cameron City Code. As we've discussed previously, willful neglect of duty arises when a public officer intentionally fails to act contrary to a known duty. Given that willful is not included within uh ninety five thirty, it would seem to me in that neglect of duty means failure to act contrary to a known duty. I don't think that anybody here doubts Mister Art's knowledge of our forward statutes or the code of ordinances regarding the park board. As he has stated that he has exhaustively studied and uh reviewed those. In the affidavits provided by Mister Art prior to this, it appears that the argument intended to be made is that the city through its finance staff failed to provide enough information for the report to be filed. Or two, since no other park board had filed the report, removal is improper. To the extent that the city's finance department did not provide adequate paperwork, Missouri law is also clear on this one. The failure of another official to follow their duty is not an excuse for another one to also fail their duty. That is, uh, state on information of McKendrick versus Williams, the direct quote is the derelictions of other officials cannot excuse his failure to perform his statutory duties. Additionally, and I, this is, we've never intended to be the point of some of the exhibits included in the Blades affidavit. But the city finance staff met with the park board numerous times, just in the five that I had when I wasn't even looking. There are references to Carmen appearing at a park board meeting, Carmen being Carmen, uh, the finance director of the city. And then also Jim Shrimpton, a part-time accountant who works for the city, also providing Matt Art with significant information. In addition to that, uh, the city's municipal financial advisor and bond council have also been brought in on some of these questions, as have I. The final argument appears to be that since the past city councils have not required that the park board submit the annual report, that this that this city council cannot require the annual report. That contention is also has no basis in Missouri law as the easiest quote is, it is no defense to a prosecution for violating the ordinance that other persons have been permitted to violate it without prosecution or punishment. That is Kansas City versus Willinette. Then a more in-depth one that will take from here is also hitting on that same idea of non-enforcement prior to enforcement is the dormant states thereof may have been demonstrated its wisdom and have been ample cause for its present enforcement. Essentially saying that prior non-enforcement might lead to the present enforcement. The after the affidavit of Shelley Blades and exhibits M and N shows that from the fiscal year two thousand nineteen to twenty twenty or fiscal year tw- two thousand nineteen, twenty twenty to the current fiscal year, the park board budget has increased by over five hundred thousand dollars. It has done. In addition, since that time, additional park assets have been acquired, instructed instructed, including Somerville Park and the Cameron Aquatic Center. Maybe it was wise of the city council in two thousand nineteen to not require an annual report when the budget was three hundred and sixty eight thousand dollar. But the city council's decision to enforce the provision requiring an annual report when the budget has increased to nine hundred thousand dollars is intentional and not invalid under Missouri law. Uh, and that includes the city's case.
Mister Art, would you like to be heard?
I would.
Wait a minute, I need to say one thing first. This this is hereby admitted in evidence. Now, I'll go, Mister Art, would you like to be heard and present evidence?
I would, I'd ask for just a minute, finish the notes here. Okay. Starting from the top, I suppose. So the first issue is uh, according to the March eighteenth letter, attempting to influence the Cameron Park Board to award myself and my company with a no bid contract for services. In Steve's affidavit, he references a contract that was provided that was proposed on April eleventh and which he says that he blocked and then moved forward with, we needed to wait to do anything until we had an opinion from the from the city council. However, there was never any contract. There there isn't one offered in the evidence, there there was never a contract. And the the idea that an opinion from the attorney was was only brought in after Steve had somehow blocked this non-existent contract is also completely false. Starting with when I, when I first saw the trees that needed attention on February fifth, I called Steve, I addressed the 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 need for these trees to be evaluated, I addressed the idea that there are not many tree people in a part of the state without many trees and that there was a significant likelihood that I would end up being um, there there was a potential that I would be the one that that would need to do the work at some point. And I addressed what are the protocols that need to be in place to make sure that we do this appropriately. That same day, I emailed Steve with a list of with a summary of here, the the ethics, the potential conflict statutes. This is on February fifth, according to Steve's affidavit, this didn't get brought up until April the eleventh. In that same day, an email back from from Patrick, um, by way of Steve going through, here are the here are the rules in which he says, as an appointed official in the City of Cameron may perform the services for the the city park board, but only after competitive bidding and if Matt is the lowest bidder. I I did not a did not agree that as just one member of a board that I would be considered an administrative official, particularly with city manager's constant insistence that we're nothing more than an advisory board. So if we're nothing more than an advisory board, how can I possibly be an administrative official? Those two just did not swear. They still don't. But regardless, before this was ever even approached with the bar.
Sorry, um, Shelley, can you swear, Matt, and?
Swear that, tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Right.
You can swear here.
Who's gonna swear me?
That's, that's what I've been trying to think about right now.
Uh, so all all of this happened, all of these discussions about what are the proper protocols, what do we need to follow, happened before this was ever brought to the park board. So the idea that it wasn't until April eleventh, when I supposedly presented a contract for this work, which again never happened, that that we had to wait for an opinion from the attorney is is clearly not the case with repeated emails to the contrary. All that I can assume that he's talking about with that contract in Steve's affidavit, number five, referencing an email that was sent on February twenty second. I sent him the a the sample, sample language for what would need to be done, a map to send out to to other companies and as I put it in the email, a quote for me to do the project. So you have this for reference as you check with other companies. That was on February thirteenth. And the reason there is because on February eighth, plan going forward was Eric Herbert, the park superintendent at the time, was going to find somebody else to do it. That was it. It was, he was gonna find another company. He had no idea what he needed to be finding them for. So I told him I would provide the information. I gave him the quote so that he had some idea of what this was gonna cost. If somebody comes back with a quote for two hundred thousand dollars, he knows that's ridiculous. You, you, it just makes common sense to have some idea of of what a project is going to cost before you try to secure a contract. So that was, that was the entirety of that email was supporting the park superintendent finding a different company. So moving forward from that, I I got a call the from the other contractor that's referenced a few times in there on February twenty second. First thing he said was, hey, Matt, you ought to call the city. They're looking for somebody to do this. It'd be, you're the first person I thought of. I talked through the project with him, told him what we were looking for, and he said that, no, that's not really something that I could do. That's, that's the only other person locally. So in in my line of work, there's not very many people around. So when later I referenced local contractors, I know that there's not other people. I'm assuming that you know that there's not another license office in Cameron. I I have to assume that you know that, just like I know there's not another certified arborist in Cameron. There's not any anywhere else. I did go ahead and I I checked today, the, I searched the International Society of Arboriculture website for certified arborists within a hundred miles of Cameron. There's myself, there's one in Saint Joe, one in Rushville, one in Odessa, and the rest are in Kansas City, in KC Metro. And so what I, what I told him repeatedly in the emails right here, other than myself, I'm not aware of anyone closer than Casey with that type of background. I'm actively telling him, this is where you need to go to find somebody other than me to do this work. There is an email along the way with Patrick that says, if there are a qualified person locally who could do the work, I'd gladly step aside, but there's not. So then we're back to the potential of me doing the work and let's find a way to make that happen. The entire time it was, let's follow the rules. The entire time it was an explicit awareness. And anytime the concept was brought up with the park board, it was an explicit, these are the rules, we need to make sure we follow them. Up until June, the plan was always Eric was gonna find somebody else to do the work. He was gonna find another company. I wasn't, I wasn't gonna bid, I wasn't gonna do anything. By then he had still hadn't found anything, nothing had happened. By the the April eleventh meeting, the the vote, the motion and the vote to move forward with the project was because by then, nothing had happened and it didn't seem that there was gonna be anything happen. So the vote was, this needs to happen. I've consulted in multiple lawsuits involving fallen trees that resulted in fatalities or permanent injury. I know exactly what the attorneys are gonna ask in those lawsuits. I've been asked in deposition. So I, yes, I I have a very good understanding of what qualification somebody needs to be able to do this work. And I was doing everything I could to find, to help Eric find somebody else to do this work. When he couldn't, okay, let's let's stop looking for somebody else. Let's bid it out because that is the the legal path forward to maybe be able to make this happen. And moving forward from there, he, despite the multiple emails from Patrick saying that I could do the work based on on a bid. Steve would come back and just simply say, no, that I'm not allowed to bid on it at all. July twenty fifth. Chairman Matt Art asked if he was allowed to do this or not, which Steve Rassismann's reply was no. I handed him the printout of the email. He still said, no, you're not allowed to bid on it. So yeah, there's, there's been a lot of frustration all along the way that that this is, I mean, we're fourteen months later and this still hasn't happened. This, not that long ago, a a treetop fell out in Rec Park, fifteen minutes after recesses were gone. If that were to happen while we know about this, that's a major problem. And yet it's still being blocked, it's still being kicked out of the road, it still hasn't happened. It needs to happen. Whether I do it or not, I don't care. But it needs to happen. So moving on to the second allegation of misconduct, an unnoticed meeting. So with that, there are there's, there's two requirements that constitutes a meeting with regard to the the sunshine law. There's, there's two things that have to happen. Number one, you have to have a quorum. And number two, there has to be discussion of of board business, not just in the room, but the board has to have a discussion of that business. Now, to that end, there are uh, there are potential exceptions, like for example, to the quorum, where even if a quorum is not present directly in the room at the time, a series of sub-quorum meetings with the intention of, well, we have less than a quorum, so we can discuss. We have less than a quorum, so we can discuss. We have less than a quorum, so we can discuss. If collectively those less than quorum meetings constitute more than a quorum. Then that is what the, the Colombo lawsuit referenced in, in Patrick's materials is talking about. It, it's not just, there happens to not be a quorum at one time. It's if there is a, a series of one-off meetings in which policy is developed, in which board business is discussed. That later constitute a quorum. Those collectively are subject to sunshine laws. And the second requirement is the discussion of public business or development of policy. So going back to the, the number one quorum, prior to the hearing, never saw Josh. I didn't know he was there until I was sitting up on the witness stand. So there, there was no quorum before the meeting. Josh's affidavit says that he was around the corner and didn't see anybody else before. So, uh, I didn't know who was gonna be there. There, there, there was no quorum before the hearing. During the hearing, I, I find it laughable to think that a court hearing is considered a park board meeting when. I was the only one asked to speak in, in the context of witness testimony. So that hardly seems like a discussion amongst the board. Not, not going any further there. The. Um, so after the hearing, there was a quorum, there was five members, including myself, that stopped and talked. But to my knowledge, nobody has ever asked any of those five what was discussed. It was just decided in the, the accusations that we were discussing park board business and with the specific intent, the specific purpose of avoiding compliance with the sunshine law. Absolutely not true. I mean, I'll tell you what was discussed. For, for ten, fifteen seconds, myself and Aaron, the attorney, talked about next steps and, and timeline. And at that point, as was mentioned earlier, the, the park board had been dismissed. So. Next steps in the lawsuit was purely myself and her discussion. Beyond that, Al Riggs and I talked about the weather. She was happier. She wanted to see it warm up. I wanted to see it freeze again so I could take my kids ice fishing. Uh, Chris mentioned the potential of starting a GoFundMe account for personal le- legal. Uh, expenses that I may incur. Josh and I talked about preference for bourbon versus Scotch. And I couldn't think of the name of the, a particular bottle somebody had given me or the name of a distillery. Texting a picture of the bottle later that afternoon, if you want to see that for proof. Julie and Aaron talked about Aaron's trip to Antarctica. There was other stuff discussed, the mention in the affidavits that I didn't hear. There was never at any time a group discussion. There was never at any time any discussion of board business. Frankly, I was so damn happy to have the thing over with. It was just a sigh of relief. There was no discussion. And to further that, the Missouri Sunshine Manual put out by the Attorney General's Office. Lists coming from that Colombo versus Buford case, a, a series of criteria that, that the courts have said are useful to use to establish whether a meeting has taken place. And those are presence of an agenda, a call to order, taking turns talking, votes for establishment of policy. Not a single one of those things happened. But yet there's the, the insistence that we. We participated in an unnoticed meeting. So there, according to all of these criteria, there was no meeting at all. So therefore there is no requirement for sunshine for, for public notice. Now moving on to the annual report, I, I'm not sure where the determination of what my position on this came from. None of that is accurate. I actually believe that we should have been reporting, submitting a report the entire time. I believe that we should have been file, following every letter of that law the entire time. The entire time, all of us. And that includes. And I, I've been pushing for years to see that we do that for years. And, and it's not just the report, it's vouchers for expenditures of, of park work, which are required by law. We, we established the bylaws. That was step one after the joint meeting with the council back in twenty twenty-two. Um, the exclusive control of funds we should be following, the exclusive control management of the parks we should be following. All of the money received for parks going into the park fund, we should be following, which I find it very, very interesting. That Patrick referenced that the park board budget doubled. But yet his, his contention is that the park board does not control that. So, so here today, he's saying that the park board budget doubled, but yet in every other meeting, he's saying that, no, those other taxes are not. For parks, they're, they're for anything else. So therefore the park board doesn't have control of them. But yet here he's saying that, that apparently we do. Also included in the law that we should be following is the part, the power to purchase land, the power to hire employees. I have specifically brought up the need to file this report at, at least twice. One of them was in the, the October thirteenth, twenty twenty-two joint meeting. Um, the, the plan moving forward at, at that meeting, the park board and the council were, were cooperative, were in agreement. It wasn't until six months ago that there was any conflict whatsoever with the council. Everything prior to that had been stemming from what I see is, is. Steve's insistence that we're nothing more than an advisory board. At that October meeting, the plan was, okay, let's put our bylaws in place first. It took us a year and a half to get through the delays, the constant delays. Three meetings during that year and a half that we actually discussed bylaws. Every single meeting, they were on our agenda and every other, aside from those three. Every other meeting, there was some reason that we had to delay. Delay, 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 obstruct, obstruct, obstruct. It has been a constant fight for years to get anything done. And that includes trying to get these, this report. Um, after we did finally get our bylaws established, I brought up the, the need for the report along with vouchers. And it, it wasn't recorded in any of the minutes. I remember specifically Steve and Zach saying that, no, they're not necessary. We're not gonna do it. There is no neglect when I'm, I'm actively trying to push for it. When I'm, I have been the most vocal person saying, we need to follow these laws for years. I don't see how you can possibly call that neglect. And so speaking to Patrick's discussion of basically the, the selective, um, the, the selective enforcement. And, and just because no, no council before has ever required this, why should you here? I guess number one to that, I would say that if you condemn me for this, you're actively condemning every single past president over the past seventy years of this board for the same. Which I, I just find hard to fathom. And beyond that. The, just the, the selective enforcement of. Why are you choosing to enforce this provision now? And why are you only choosing to enforce this provision and none of the other ones? Why, why are we not enforcing vouchers? I, I read in the paper last week that, that Steve's plan is for park staff to approve the vouchers. Well, state law says that those vouchers have to come from the park board. It doesn't say park staff. It says the park board. But we're not, we're not worried about enforcing those. I mean, that to me begs the question, why now? Why me? Why now? So then just the very existence of the requirement. For the report reinforces the idea of the park board is on a special status compared to the other departments of the city. Because the, the correct way to interpret the state law is that every clause, every word is given meaning. And i- if you think about. If everything truly does flow through the council, if every decision lands on your table, what is the purpose for us providing the report? He talked about the, the budget having doubled. Why does utilities with their significantly larger budget, why do they not, are they not required to file a report? The answer is because the park board is, is granted exclusive authority by state law. To where those decisions stop at the park board and that is why that report is necessary. If everything flows to the council, that clause is extra. That clause has no meaning. And therefore that is an impossible conclusion according to the rules of how state law gets interpreted.
That's all I have for now.
Would either party like to cross-examine any witness offered by the other party?
Yeah, cross-examining that. But, uh, so Matt, after you decided that you were gonna be a bidder, did you participate in discussions regarding the hazardous tree assessment?
It was never put out for bid, so I didn't know.
I mean, you, when you said. I can bid on it. Did you participate in discussion regarding that contract and that proposed bid with the park board?
Possibly.
Yes, you did. It's in the affidavits and in the meeting minutes as well, where especially on six twenty-seven, that's not a possibility then.
Maybe you want to find out?
You can refer to any of the exhibits, exhibits.
B, you haven't made number one chance.
Yeah, yes, I do. It's also in the memo. Uh, exhibit D, page one. We'll start after June twenty-seven. So affidavit, exhibit F, page two and four. Lade's affidavit, exhibit G. Page two. Still trying to find the June one. Well, so you don't have to find it. Do you, you ever edit the minutes of the park board?
Yes.
So the minutes as approved are a correct summation in your mind of what occurred to that park board meeting?
As, as close as it needs to be, yes. It's not necessarily always word to word, but it's, it's, uh, at least accurate in spirit, yes.
So then on June twenty-seventh, uh, President Matt Arnn brought to the park board the issues of the hazardous tree assessment. And Emerald Ash Board Treatments that they have talked about previously. Previous Parks and Rec Superintendent Eric River had not planned to find anyone. And not been able to find anyone to do the assessment. And as you noted in your testimony, this is after. You went, decided that you could, that you would bid on it as long as you were the lowest bidder. Could get the contract as long as you're the lowest bidder. At previous meeting, the board requested that the project be bid so that Matt. Would be able to potentially receive the contract for the project in accordance with ethics rules. He told the park board he is unaware of anyone else locally that would be willing and able to complete the formal risk assessment. Then it goes on, Matt told the board that the continued delay would cause issues and so on and so forth. Then additionally, if you want to go to. Exhibit. I don't have letters. That was exhibit G, exhibit F was the June twenty-seventh. Which also included your handwritten notes. On page one, Matt Arnn brought, Matt Arnn brought the tree assessment before the board. Eric said that he can get Bob Thornton's tree service to do it and talk to Steve Rasmussen, city manager about it. Matt Arnn said he can also bid on the service. Then on page four, Matt Arnn said that he has a risk assessment certification. However, Bob. Jordan does not have this certification. And then the park board asked why Matt Arnn cannot bid on the tree assessment. So I'd ask again, after you said you were going to be a bidder or a potential bidder, did you participate in discussions with the park board regarding the hazardous tree assessment?
I guess I would qualify that with, I said that I couldn't bid on it, but yes.
Okay, so knowing that you could bid on it, you participated in discussions regarding that proposed contract. Um, can I ask why the contractor had to be local if he didn't? Okay, well then why did you always qualify, you're the only one qualified locally?
Because that's a true statement.
But then why is that important? Is there some importance to local?
No, and that's also why I told Eric that he would need to look in Kansas City to find people.
So your qualifications over another person, the only other person in town, were not relevant. You just made them.
No, the, the qualification, the, the formal training and risk assessment matters. The local comparing myself with that training versus somebody in the city with that training is not that.
But to summarize, you participated in discussions regarding the contract. You said that you were the only one locally involved by to do it and that you could bid on it, correct?
And I also provided the specs.
And reviewed the minutes. Where it specifically said that the entire purpose for the bid was so that you could potentially get the contract.
It did not say the entire purpose.
Just read it again.
Show me the word.
At a previous meeting, the park board requested that the project be bid, though that Matt would be able to potentially receive contract for the project.
And so you just said that the entire purpose was so that I could get the.
I apologize. The board requested that the project be bid, though that Matt would be able to potentially receive contract for the project. That is correct.
That's what it says, yes.
Okay, thank you. Um. And also, so you admit no report has been filed under section ninety-five sixty.
That's the annual report?
Yes.
Right, yeah.
You knew that the report was supposed to be filed?
Yes.
Um, did you?
In fact, I was, I was the one that made a lot of people aware that it was supposed to be filed.
Did you at any point argue that the park board had the complete and total ability to expend all funds in the park fund without any city council approval outside of the budget?
Not to that extent, no. I have always said that the. Park board's authority is subject to city ordinance, but beyond that. After, after that money is appropriated into the park fund, then yes, the decision should stop with the park.
And so the park board, once the budget is adopted. No more city council involvement?
Other than any ordinances that might affect that, yes.
Um, thank you. I'd also note. On the Lade's affidavit, affidavit, exhibit M. Uh, section one, the city council hereby has approved and adopted a budget for the fiscal year. There's no appropriation. I also know this.
What do you mean by there's no appropriation?
A budget was approved, minds were not appropriated. There's a difference in those two terms. Um, I'd also note. Lade's affidavit, exhibit M, section one, the city council hereby has approved and adopted a budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty-four. Again, no appropriation included in there. Um. Talk about, talk about the draft into the bylaws. Um, in the bylaws, was there a section that authorized the park board president? To take any action of the park board if in the president's discretion, there was not reasonable time to call a meeting of the full board?
No, that required both the president and the, and.
And the adopted.
And the superintendent.
And the adopted, in the original versions, did it include just the president?
I forgot what the original was.
It did?
I'll, I'll accept that. You don't have to pull it up.
All right. So again, just. You know that the annual report is required to be filed. Yes, yes or no? You know that the annual reports. You have taken the position that the park board, after appropriation, can expend any funds that it might want. On park purposes, obviously.
Subject to all the proper approvals and ordinances.
And in a early version of the bylaws, which might have led to the delay that you referenced, there was a provision that the president could expend money out of the park fund. Without the approval of a majority of the park board.
And I would also point out that the early version you're talking about was a, a draft that was not adopted. I guess I don't see the.
All right, um, that's all the. City has for cross-examining.
Yeah, um, would it, uh. Would you like to provide, would you like to also present a cross? Examination?
I'd like to invite Steve out, please.
Where do you want me to be?
Um, just sit right there.
Yeah.
How you doing, Steve? Okay, um, in your affidavit, there's a few things that I wanted to look at for. The number six, item number six is, laws in attendance at Cameron Park Board meeting on April eleventh. Matt Arnn, President of Cameron Park Board, presented to the board for their recommendation a contract for services, including himself and the city. given himself and the city of Cameron. You have a copy of that contract?
No, I don't.
Did you ever?
I may have one in my file.
I guess if, if you may have one in your file, why didn't you include it in your report?
I don't know. I wasn't asked to do that.
What were you asked to do?
Well, I was asked what happened at that meeting and that's.
And if this, I mean, to me, it makes sense that this entire allegation centers around the contention that I offered a contract that I proposed a contract. So I'm, I'm just a little fuzzy on why that contract wasn't wasn't presented.
I don't know.
Okay, so at the minutes for that meeting, the entire section talking about the hazard tree assessment says a hazard tree assessment plan was discussed. Matt Arnt made the motion to get a hazard tree plan in place. Chris Wilkens said, seconding the motion, voice mode, the motion carries. Did you hear a mention of the contract there?
When?
In, in that section of the minutes? I mean, I'm happy to. Would you like the copy?
I, I, I didn't write the minutes. I didn't approve the minutes. If it would have been me, I would have put that in there.
If it had happened, yes. So I've got sworn affidavits in addition to myself saying it didn't happen. The minutes say it didn't happen. So moving on, your number eight. Or I'm sorry.
Back again to number six, I will say it shouldn't be, it happened.
Okay. So down to number eight, it says after me proposing this contract that's not reflected in the minutes that you don't have a copy of and that there's six sworn testimonies saying it didn't happen. I have others or the affidavit, or the item provided by Julie Osmus is not an affidavit, it's a it's a letter. Okay. That's fine. So it says that you, so after this contract, so at that April eleventh meeting, it says, let me advise us myself that the contract could not, should not be considered until the opinion of the city attorney regarding the conflict is received. So had we not received that opinion before that?
I don't understand the question. Say it again.
You're saying that at the April eleventh, you, you, you told me that we couldn't execute this phantom contract until after we had received an opinion from the city attorney. So had, I'm asking, so at that time, are we telling you we have not yet received an opinion from the city attorney?
No, we hadn't received that, but we'd wait, wanted to wait until we see what the city attorney would say based on that.
Okay. I'll hand you copies if you like, but here's an email from the city attorney to yourself. You then forwarded to me saying explicitly that Matt as an appointed official of the city of Cameron made the following services after competitive bidding, if Matt is the lowest bidder.
Okay, that's what he sent to you?
No, he sent it to you and you sent it to me. Do you remember that?
I do remember that.
You do, but you just told me that it didn't happen.
No, I was talking about a different thing.
No, you weren't. You were talking about, you said that prior to that April eleventh meeting, we had not received an opinion from the city attorney regarding the hazard tree assessment, but yet here it is. And your testimony in conflict with all of this other testimony in conflict with the approved minutes. Yours is the only one that's different, but yet you don't remember the, the February email. You don't remember, I'm sure, the other email. Here is one February thirteen, here's one February twenty-two, going on down through. There's a, a long series of emails. I, I provided a record of a phone call on February fifth where I called and talked to you about this, which I immediately followed up with an email, which, which then led to the, the rest of discussion. So I guess how is it, if you don't remember these emails, you don't remember these things happening and all of this other testimony is.
Trying to put words into my mouth there.
Okay, so you say that this email didn't happen, which.
I don't have those emails in front of me now, so I can't track with you, okay? I'd need some time to go back and review them.
Okay, well, I'm basing this on your sworn affidavit saying that after, we couldn't do anything after the April eleventh meeting and until we had received that opinion. And then I asked you if we had yet prior to that, and you said, no, we had. Okay, and then I've, I've got these emails right here directly contrary to that. So then you, you expect me to just accept your recollection over all of this other sworn testimony over the contemporaneous minutes? That you do remember this contract, even though you don't have a copy of it? So I, we're just supposed to accept that, that that statement is true? Over all of the other evidence to the contrary?
What's your question?
Are we supposed to accept that, that your recollection of this contract is accurate?
I will tell you what happened.
Go ahead, please.
What happened is at that meeting, you came in and you laid a piece of paper on the table and you said, I have a contract here for doing a whatever the tree assessment was, our tree spraying, I think it was, and you laid it down there. And then you said, I'm going to recruise myself though, because since the contract is me, I can't vote on it. And you left it there for the rest of the committee. And I said, no, I don't think you can do that because you can't do that without having gone out and done a bidding on it first. And then we said, before we do that, we need to go back and get an opinion from the city attorney about what you do. That is what happened.
Okay, but you don't have this contract.
No, you had it sitting on the table. You didn't give it to me.
Okay. Multiple sworn affidavits saying that is not accurate. Minutes never referencing a contract.
That's exactly what happened. I didn't see the contract because you laid it on the table. We're going to recruise yourself.
So you didn't, so you didn't see the contract. At the beginning of your testimony, you told me you did see it. So now you didn't see it?
You, you laid it on the table and at that time I did not see it.
So did you see it or did you not see it?
At that time I did not see it because you laid it on the table and said you were going to recruise yourself.
So how do you know it was a contract if you never saw it?
Maybe because you said it was.
Interesting. So you were quoted last week in the paper saying that the park board is nothing more than an advisory board. You've said this multiple times over the past few years. Patrick has said multiple times that the park board is in fact an administrative board, which is.
Objection, elements? I mean, I don't know what, how that's relative to whether or not misconduct was or did not happen. The nature of the park board.
You were just discussing the nature of the park board with me and, and all of the other things. This is whether, whether, whether we are an advisory board or an administrative board and whether Steve agrees with that, I think is definitely pertinent. Because so much of the issues that we have had have come from Steve saying that we're nothing more than an advisory board. So Steve, in your opinion, is the park board an advisory board or an administrative board with actual authority?
First of all, let me go back and say what's printed in the newspaper isn't, isn't fact or evidence. It gets put in there. And not necessarily what is.
Which is why I'm asking you right now.
Yes, my, my recommendation is that the park board is an advisory board and advises the city council. Take those recommendations back. And I think in almost every case, the city council takes the recommendation of the park.
Okay. That's all I've got. And then I'll go redirect. Steve, I'm sliding to my computer. There's an email there. Right there. Will you tell me who that is from, what the date of that is, and then whether or not that's your email address? Let's do it.
From Matt Arnt, Thursday, May ninth to Stephen Radford, and it says conflict of interest.
Perfect. Thank you. Is May ninth after February eleven?
Uh, February eleventh.
Or April eleven? Still, still an affirmative?
Say that date again.
Is May ninth after April eleven?
I note that in this email on May ninth, Mr. Arnt is still arguing that the conflict of interest statute does not apply to him as he is not an administrative official. Thereby guessing on April eleventh, when you made the statement, we have to, what day was it? You said the minutes that he made the statement that we had to wait on the, the name of the city attorney?
I believe that was the April eleventh, based on his affidavit.
Then at the April eleventh meeting, is it still reasonable in your affidavit? But the reason you said that is because there was still emails up till May ninth regarding the, the ability of the, and the apt ability of the conflict of interest statute. Is that the reason why you might have said that we were still waiting on the opinion of the city attorney?
Say that again later.
Due to the continuing requests and emails here going all the way to May ninth. Do you think that's why on April eleventh you said we're still waiting on the opinion of the city attorney? Because there was still discussion regarding the opinion on May ninth? Thank you. And then Steve, how many years have you been a city manager? Worked in cities?
Twenty-six.
Have you had any other experiences where a member or president of a board has participated in discussions about a contract that they made that on?
No.
Have you ever had a member of a board provide a quote in bid specifications regarding a contract with one of their boards that they are on?
Not that I recall.
All right, thank you. No further questions.
Do I get to follow up?
I mean, I guess we could, but now we're outside of our time, but I mean, the city council could save for good cause. Mr. Arnt, it's a redirect of a redirect for a certain number of minutes?
I'd say give him two minutes.
All right.
So Steve, Patrick just asked you about if, if you had reason to believe on April eleventh that it was going to be an email on May ninth or twenty-ninth. I don't remember the date. Can you predict the future? Did you, did you have any way of, of thinking or knowing on April eleventh that there was going to be an email on May ninth?
Well, certainly not.
Okay, so therefore that couldn't possibly have been the reason that you made that statement. The reason you made that statement in your affidavit is because you didn't recall the February emails that we've already discussed. That's all.
I would just know.
You had a question or thing?
The reference to the May ninth email is in regards to an email chain that has emails in March. It also has another email in May eighth where Matt is circling back to again go over the, whether or not he can get a no bid contract from the, from the city. And I'll provide these emails to the city council after the, after the hearing to be included as an exhibit.
That will as well, to make sure they all get there.
Is that it for the cross-examining?
Well, and then you could have other questions if you want to cross-examine.
I do. I'd like to ask Lance to come up. Hey, Lance.
I'm fine. You just.
Sorry, not too bad. Sorry, leave you back there for a while. Just a couple of questions for you. In your affidavit, you referenced the email that I had sent you, that I had forwarded, a version that I had previously sent Eric, providing specs and all of that. So I guess the, the topic that I'd like to go down just a little bit is resurfacing of the task court. And prior to doing that project, did you have any familiarity with task court resurfacing, the specifications required?
You mean for the, for the pickleball, in, in month?
Yes.
No.
And so where did you get those specifications?
You and I met with a group out of St. Joe, and I had them come in to help me create those plans and specs.
And were they expected to be a bidder on that contract?
They were available to bid on that one.
And did they end up getting the bid on that contract? They did.
They did? Yeah, I gotta remember what name they had.
Protr.
Yeah, so yeah.
Okay, and, and so in your experience, when you don't have that personal familiarity to be able to write the specs yourself, is common and acceptable to work with a potential bidder to get those specs?
So you know exactly what's going on, except you don't name any particular thing in the specs. It, it would be, for instance, you don't name a particular product. Or when you say you say this is the size of the, of the area and this is the material that you're going to use. Whenever you're, you're asking another professional to help you write spec. For instance, if demolitions. I don't mean I go along, I mean demolitions. Whenever you go out and you get specs, you want to make sure, one of the reasons why we're going with Terragon right now is because Terragon's writing specs for one twelve East Third. And they know what they're getting. I could have wrote it with the help of one of the contractors that came in and said, okay, for instance, you've got this much asbestos, you need to take it out. And this is the approximate amount. So that would be something you would take and put in the bid. And say this is the approximate amount of asbestos that you're going to. So yeah, it's not uncommon to have somebody that has knowledge of that, and then you take that as your rough draft. And then you put it together to make sure that there are no no names associated.
Like trade names for.
Right.
Or specific.
Exactly.
So I guess following Patrick's lead there, I'll, I'll submit to the city council after the fact an email from Protrack and Tenor specifying these are the specs and then a copy of that bid solicitation that is almost verbatim, word for word between the two. And so last question for you, Lance, prior to discussion of the hazard tree assessment, you have personal knowledge of what's required in a hazard tree assessment?
No.
That's all.
Yeah, Lance, for the pickleball people, were any of them members of the park board?
No, they were not.
Did the park board make a motion to go out to bid so that the pickleball company could bid on the contract?
No, they did not.
In your experience, when you're going out and trying to find people to help you do bid specs, do you ever go and utilize members of a, a board that their jurisdiction involves that topic or?
No.
Thank you.
Do you have any more?
No.
Well, that concludes our cross-examination. Would the city attorney like to provide a summary of the city's evidence and legal arguments?
I, I still.
Oh, all right.
I guess Shelley.
Oh, okay. Like you said, no, okay.
Oh, I meant nothing for.
Okay, I'm sorry. I thought we were finished. Okay.
Swear myself in.
Yes, yeah.
I swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Shelley, I'm gonna say everybody else, how you doing this evening? So in your affidavit, you mentioned that, I think it says beforehand and after the hearing, meeting and conversing, and you specifically mentioned myself, Julie Osmus, Al Briggs, Chris Wilkinson, Josh Smith, before and after. It's my testimony and Josh's as well. I don't recall if the others present mentioned anything, but Josh was not part of that group beforehand. Do you agree that that might have been an error, that he was sitting there beforehand?
Possibly.
I'm not trying to. So after the hearing, there was a quorum and we moved out towards, we were headed outside, but it was cold, so we stopped in the entryway. Would you hear anything that was discussed?
No.
Okay, that's all.
Yeah, Shelley, did, after the hearing, did you, me and the mayor meet? Call like after the hearing?
Yes.
What did we talk about? Did we talk about the hearing?
I don't think so.
Did we talk about how somebody had been dismissed and what was going on and then looking down the vest of door? I guess, thank you.
I guess, thank you.
I was there.
All right, anyone else?
Yeah, I think I would like to ask yourself a few questions.
Well, given that this is cross-examination, the mayor's never been examined the first time. So, so that's why, again, those three, they were offered as witnesses, the mayor hasn't been offered as a witness. Okay, we'll cross-examination.
Okay, that's fine.
So are we ready to move on?
Yeah.
Okay. Would the city attorney like to provide a summary of the city's evidence and legal argument?
Yes, as discussed, uh, Mr. Hart's three accusations, two of them involving misconduct. The first, obviously, with the, uh, potential bid for the hazard tree assessment, even if Mr. Hart never provided a no-bid contract, which the city denies via the affidavit of Steve Rasmussen and other various emails that show that just the very fact of being a bidder, sitting on a board, that gets to make the decisions on the bid specs, that gets to make the final rec, the recommendation to the city council for the approval of it, is in and of itself, in and of itself unacceptable and bad behavior. That is something that no other public official would ever want to participate in, because it would draw a clear notice of apparent legal conflict. Secondly, the unnoticed meeting while Mr. Hart, throughout his thing, kept discussing intentional violations of the sunshine law. While there is an intentional violation of the sunshine law, the sunshine law can also be violated unintentionally. Uh, he has admitted there was a quorum, he admitted that they discussed the outcome of what was going on specifically. He had maybe doing a GoFundMe for legal expenses to continue the litigation, which, again, litigation was solely and strictly about the park board's business. Uh, and then as to the final neglect of duty regarding the failure to file the report, as stated in the Algarre case, and as noted on the legal memo, it takes failure to act contrary to a known duty. Mr. Hart knew that he had to submit a, the park board had to submit a report, and he did not do that. That in and of itself is reason for removal, specifically, the State Exhale Thomas versus Olivera case involved a, uh, court of appeals of holding the ouster of a county reporter for failure to file a necessary report regarding, uh, filing fees. In that case, it wasn't even that they didn't file the report, as the park board has failed to do here, it was that there was one number missing off on the entry. And that was viewed under a higher standard of willful neglect of duty to subject that reporter of deeds to removal by the, the termie general for, for virtue and ouster from office. Um, I also note that one of the reasons why the council could be requiring additional things is that Mr. Hart has now taken the position and in court that the park board could approve contracts for over $360,000. That might necessitate the necessity to get an annual report from the park board. And I have nothing else.
Mr. Hart, would you like to provide a summary of your evidence and legal argument?
I would, and while I'm trying to find in my pile here, a proper summary, I would point out again that Patrick now seems to acknowledge that the park board does in fact have control over that money, regardless of what he's asserted in the past, to that end. Somewhere in my pile, I have it. So, first, just responding to a couple of things Patrick just says. He says that various emails show that I presented a contract, there is no email that presents a contract. And I'll make sure to send you every single one of them, and you can read it in context and see if there's ever a contract. If there's a contract, get me on, please do. So if all of these things, if, if what is alleged had actually happened, I would agree. That person should be gone, but what is alleged didn't happen. So there's, what, what I'm seeing here is, I guess, a couple, a couple of things more to, to follow up with Patrick. The, he, he talks about, regardless of if there was a contract or not, that just the fact that I, I was pushing for a hazard tree assessment to happen is completely improper. And I, I will also say that, that from the get-go, I, I did everything that I could to be ahead of any potential appearance. I did everything that I possibly could to, to make sure that we were following all of the laws. And the fact is, the project needs done. I'm still pushing for it, it needs done. The fact that it hasn't been done is a problem. The project needs done, period. And then the last thing, he, he talks about the, the GoFundMe for continuing litigation. There's never been a contemplation of continuing litigation, that was just for personal expenses that I might have, because the park board had been dismissed. So that's purely a personal nature, my own finances are not park board business. They are, that is 100% personal. So, what I'm seeing here in all of this is a lack of a contract, of just a, a lack of evidence. A, a lack of a contract for the hazard tree assessment. Uh, a, a lack of any discussion of, uh, board business. Lack of any sort of, of sunshine violation, there's a, a last lack of everything. And, and to the, the annual report, it hasn't been filed. I don't deny that. I have been pushing since I first read these statutes that we need to follow every law, you know that. You know that very well. And all that we have run into is constant obstruction. I'd, I'd like to, to read a text exchange here between myself and the mayor after the April 25th meeting, which was the, the one immediately after the board voted to move forward. Uh, the mayor says, "You gave Steve, and Steve had, good for you." I said, "I'm tired of never getting the answers we're promised." And on these topics tonight, it is quite literally million-dollar questions. She says, "Yes, I agree, love you, love, I'm taking Steve to task." We all know it won't change, that needs to change. He's out of his element at the park board meetings. Why is he still here? Eric's the man. I say, "I'm not sure if Eric's yet comfortable with all the inner workings, but Steve doesn't really seem to have a clue what's going on with parks either."
Yeah.
The thing that gets me the most is the specific conversation, votes, and requests, and then nothing comes from it. I've made it a more, normal part of my meeting routine to note all of the promises for follow-ups in the minutes as we review them, so that I can ask about them. 99% of the time, it's just like tonight, or Steve doesn't seem to remember that he was supposed to follow up on anything. If that gives you a little bit of context of what we've been dealing with over the past three years, that's, that's a very good summary of the, the constant, we, we can't get things done. It, there has been so much hostility, so much contentiousness. The, the park board has felt like we've had to fight for everything. This annual, this annual report included. So, I guess I want to finish by talking about this side of the room. This is the side of the room that we're supposed to be working for, all of them. This is the side of the room that matters. And we all know that this stuff we're talking about tonight isn't why we're here. This is retaliation. For the park board, this has always been about insisting that we follow the law. As it's written, not as we might want it to be written, or as it might be convenient, but as it's written, period. What I see tonight, it is about controlling. It is about proving a point. It's about putting me in my place. And I'm gonna tell you, my place is right here. My place is standing up and saying, "We must follow the law." Every time. Every time. Thank you.
I'm sorry?
I don't know. Can I ask a question?
You could. Um, obviously, today's hearing is supposed to be purely evidentiary and of legal base. But sure, go ahead.
I don't understand. Is a, is a hazardous tree assessment a two-part contract? One, I'm, I don't know, I'm assuming that you would go out and mark the trees that you think are hazardous as one part of the operation contract, and then the second part of the contract would come back and take care of the trees that you marked as a hazardous tree assessment. That's right or wrong?
They, those wouldn't necessarily be two contracts. Or, I'm, I'm sorry, the part of the same contract, those are two separate things that I would expect would be two separate contracts.
Two separate contracts.
Yeah. And, uh, in the email, if you don't already have it in front of you, that, that outlines the specifications, and I hope it describes what exactly I have to assess.
You, you gave a quote on Matt's Healthy Woods and Wild Black, a quote from the city of Camber dated, they generated 213, valid to, until 413, for one hazardous tree assessment. Rate class custom. Rate, $1,375. Unit. Contract. Quantity, one. Total, $1,375. If total's $1,375. And then on your stationery goes, "The price quote is valid for 60 days from the date it was generated." Please feel free to call or email with any questions, thank you. So your contention is that it was good till 413, and after that, the question is that you were, we were seeking, everybody was seeking legal counsel to find out if this was or legal?
No, I, I provided that, that quote, and it's explicitly stated in the email. That is for reference for Eric to use while he's looking for other companies. I gave him that purely as reference.
Okay. This, this is what I, okay. Okay, that clarified a little bit.
And so all of the, you talked about the, the rate class, all of that, this is just my standard quote generator.
Okay.
That language on there. And the council member Breckenridge, and the emails that I'll send you, there are or emails from Mr. Hart, which he attempts to argue that section 105 does the provision regarding not being able to receive a contract unless you're below a domestic head, is not, including more on me.
And during that time, the only discussion with the board was whether or not the hazard tree assessment should happen. And never was it discussed whether or not myself and Wood should get them contract.
All right, at this time, the city council will take this matter under advisement, and I will entertain a motion to adjourn the hearings and the meeting. Second. Do you roll call?
No.
You have a regular voucher, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Good night, guys.
Thank you.